So I now reconvene to the regular meeting of the Board of Education Thursday, February 18th at 6:00 p.m. With Bridge, Cruz, Donnie, and Naugh in shape of present. The meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and recorded at.
The Board met in close session from 4:20 p.m. to 5:27 p.m. regarding conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. One possible case. Conference with labor negotiators, ACT and CSCA. Public employee discipline dismissal release and public employee performance evaluation superintendent. No act taken that requires public disclosure.
Thank you, Pat. Leading us in the pledge of allegiance tonight will be Mr. Cruz.
Please stand up. Ready?
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Moving on, real quick before we move on, I do not see Justin. He had connection issues last meeting and potentially again tonight. If he pops up, we will move to him. I do want to remind everybody, you might not see him at home, but there are screens between all of us and we will be wearing our masks as much as possible. So we will skip Justin for right now. Hope that he can join us shortly. We will start then with Ms. Brenda Walker, ACT president, please.
Good evening, President Schaefer, Board members, Superintendent Enfield, district staff and community. We so appreciate the district's work in making COVID-19 testing and vaccines available to employees. It's a good indication of the district's commitment to our health and safety. And just a quick shout out and thanks to our nurses for what they've been doing. Many are singing their praises for the good work at the vaccine clinic. Just one other comment tonight. We know the federal government, the state and county agencies have made adjustments to guidelines and protocols related to school reopening. So we look forward to the discussion item that is on the agenda for later in this meeting. And certainly recognize the task that you have in front of you. As I mentioned at the last board meeting, we as an association don't have a vote on when our schools are reopened partially or fully. But I can assure the district and the board that we will continue to work closely with the district to provide the highest level of instruction to all the students in our districts, whether they are in person or learning remotely whenever the safe reopening occurs. And with that, I wish you all a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. I do not see our representative from CSCA, either Danny or Mr. Solis. So we will go on to a similar lap from Cam.
Good evening, President Schaefer, School Board members, Cabinet and Chino Valley community. Administrators have been working onsite all year and are finding some very creative ways to keep our students and families and communities connected. I'd like to share just a few highlights of some of the positive events happening at our schools. Recently, EJ Marshall had pizza delivered to their local grocery store to thank these essential workers. Glen Mead Elementary School holds a virtual wheel spin every Friday. Students exhibiting positive behavior are added to the spinning wheel and prizes are mailed home to the winners. Anna Borba holds monthly drawings for family pizza parties, family ice cream sundae kits and snack attack bags as incentives for students who are being respectful, responsible and safe. Newman Elementary School hosted a virtual avid family night with the councils from Don Lugo High School as their special guest presenters. This month, our schools also began the process of administering the English language proficiency assessment to our English language learning students. We have been working diligently to organize and lead this task within our current distance learning platform. It's a difficult undertaking and our administrators and teachers are working together and rising to meet. Despite the challenges this year, and there have been many, we strive to serve our community, support our families and educate our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer, joining us this evening. Of course, Ms. Walker, thank you for being here. We'll move on now to comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. We are now comments on items not on the agenda. As noted in the public advisory post in the agenda, staff can now read into the record the names and comments of emails received during specified window and in accordance with 4523 meeting conduct. Comments will be read in order to email was received. Email comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that. If an unusual amount of email comments were submitted for any item, the Board will hear up to 30 minutes of comments. In the case of non-agenda items, the Board candidate chooses here the remainder of the comments after all this is discussed. Pat, did you receive any non-agenda item comments from the public?
Yes, we received six non-agenda item comments and they are as follows. From Shannon McCrory. Good evening, Superintendent and Board members. I am the parent of Anayala senior student athlete. I won't get into specific details about how this year has impacted my daughter's mental and physical health. It's heartbreaking. We are grateful that sports have been allowed to resume on a small scale and our student athletes are able to interact with their teammates and peers. However, the purpose of my letter is for the school district to strongly consider an outdoor graduation ceremony for our seniors. In correspondence with our principal, Mrs. Yarboy, she has stated the class of 2021 will be giving what the class of 2020 was given. A drive-by graduation is absolutely unacceptable. While it wasn't ideal for the class of 2020 to have a drive-by graduation, they also enjoyed over two-thirds of their senior year on campus and participated in athletics and activities. This class of 2021 has had nothing and will continue to have nothing. So how is this giving the class of 2021 the same as what the class of 2020 was given? It is not even close. There will be no prom, no homecoming, no rallies, no grad night and possibly no sporting events. Ayala High School has done nothing for our seniors. Any small celebration that the seniors have enjoyed up to this point have been coordinated by a parent group. Our numbers are trending very positively in the county and specifically in our cities. An outdoor graduation ceremony in each school's respective football stadium or a neighboring college, junior college, is not much to ask for from a health and safety standpoint. The students already split into cohorts and graduation ceremonies can also be done in cohorts. The class of 2021 has been labeled as the forgotten class and I, and as a parent, I am so disappointed and sad for these students who have given so much of themselves to Ayala and to this district. I wish the district cared about them as much as we do. So again, I strongly urge the district to explore outdoor graduation ceremonies to show all the seniors in the class of 2021. They will never be forgotten. Sincerely, Shannon Gomez. Lisa Fraga. Hello, Board. First and foremost, I would like to thank you for transparency through this unprecedented year. I definitely do not envy the position you are all in. Today I'm writing to express my concern with what will happen to Trax ABC at Cal-Aero. You should vote to open our school. We were not split up like the other elementary between blended and distant teachers. Instead, our kids have had their same teachers all this time. Now, with what could be two to three months instruction at best, many students would be forced to get to know a new teacher, not to mention our poor teachers. They have poured almost an entire year into these kids. Do you now have to be taking from them? I'm not sure what the best solution is, but at the very least, please give us options and answers if you want to make changes with two to three months left in the school year. We were told our Trax would be given the option to change learning plans should school resume in person. When will be given that choice? I look forward to your replies, Lisa Fraga. From Tiffany MC. Good evening, CBUSD Board members. The class of 2021 needs your help. They have been robbed of their entire senior year. It would be different if it was statewide, but it's not. Neighboring school districts have allowed in-person learning and resumed some activities with CD precautions in place. An outdoor graduation ceremony at College Stadium, Mount SAC, California State University Fullerton, or any other outdoor complex is a must. Social distancing and limited graduation ceremony tickets available per student will aid in adherence to city's large gatherings compliance guidelines. Another drive-through ceremony is a slap in the face to these seniors and us parents. The district has had, district has had over eight months to figure out ways of to offset, modify, celebrate graduation, graduating seniors. And so far, we have seen absolutely nothing. Everything that has been done has been parent-driven. Student depression is at an all-time high. Please give our students something to look forward to during these unprecedented times. Thank you for your time, senior. Parent senior 2021. Sharon Duran. Good evening, School Board and Superintendent. My name is Sharon Duran and I am a parent of four CBUSD student. First, I'd like to point out that a couple of months ago, I submitted an email for comments and received a response that my email was not received within the timeframe deadline of 2:00 p.m. The timestamp was at 2:00 p.m. This is not the first time that this has happened. I would appreciate this matter being looked into. I have a first and second ninth graders that are struggling in various ways. I live in a multi-generational home where I am my mother's caretaker. For the past two years, my two teen boys would stay after school at the library on campus until the elementary school kids got out. At this point, at this time, I pick up at Magno's Junior High School. This provided a quiet space and access to computers after school for over an hour a day. They planned on continuing this routine once in high school. As you can imagine, this has caused huge challenges. I'd like to point out that one of my high school students has an IEP and is often depressed and has spoke openly of suicide. That takes my time and attention daily. I fear for all of my four kids daily. Hearing Mr. Cruz speaks nonsense is not new to me. Please stop it with your non-scientific facts and Christian fear tactics. Thank you, Sharon Duran. My friend Liv Bellano Bellayo had to choose to sign her sons up for blended or distant school due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Given the information she had at the time, she chose blended learning for both of her sons. She expected that her sons would return together despite that one is special education and one is in general education. We've known Ozzy since he was five years old in kindergarten. My daughter also had Down syndrome. In fact, just over seven years ago, she just, she unexpectedly died. As a friend and a fellow parent of a child with Down syndrome, Ozzy's mom felt the pain of my daughter's passing at the depth that others might not fully understand. What if this was to happen to her Ozzy? On December 23rd, 2020, the CD placed those on Down syndrome, those with Down syndrome on the increased risk list, meaning that those with Down syndrome will oftentimes suffer severe illness, even death from COVID-19. She made this decision without having all the necessary information. No one had the information prior to when she expected to make this decision. She did not expect to learn that her son was at increased risk of serious illness, nor did she expect he would return to school while general education students remained home. As a result of signing him up for blended learning, Ozzy is forced to return to school. When she asked for a change due to circumstances, the only offer was home and hospital instruction. Home and hospital instruction is really designed only to provide maintenance of the pupil's former level of performance while recovering. Despite numerous requests, the district has refused to allow Ozzy to switch to distance learning. Sending special education students back to school when general education students are not returning is clearly discrimination. Ozzy's mother made that choice before she has had all the facts. If it is unsafe for the general education population to return, then those in special education should not be forced to return against medical advice and the wishes of their parents. CDC has encouraged students to work with parents to protect students and their families in its 2021 K-12 School Operational Strategy Newsletter. It is the appropriate thing to do, the moral thing to do. Please allow an accommodation so Ozzy can transfer to distance learning. Linda Higgins. Distance or blended learning. Given the information Ms. Bellayo, Ozric Estrada's mother had, she chose blended for both of her sons. She expected if one of her sons returned to school, both would return. Not the case. Only students in blended in special education, also known as cohorts, have returned to school. No general education students have returned. Ozzy Down syndrome and was enrolled in blended. He is disallowed for moving to distance learning despite the CDC revealing on December 23rd, 2020 that Down syndrome was added to the COVID-19 high-risk group, meaning those with Down syndrome are at high risk of suffering severe illness contracting the, if contracting the virus. Ms. Bellayo didn't learn until January 2021 that Down syndrome was on the increased risk list. How was she expected to decide between blended and distance, given the evolving nature of the pandemic and without all the facts? Special education students, cohorts in blended are the only students forced to attend in person, even though it's still inadvisable on accounting regulations for general education to return. The facts about Down syndrome and the high risk of COVID-19 is contracted. Published by the CDC on December 23rd, 2020, only after the December 17th, 2020 deadline to request a change from blended to distance learning. And accommodation, an accommodation for Ozric to move to distance was requested of the Special Education Department in January 2021 but refused. The request was summarily refused even against current CDC guidelines recommending that those with Down syndrome be allowed, regardless of their cohort program, to attend via distance learning and also against Ozric's doctor's recommendation in writing that he be enrolled in distance. The Director of Special Education suggested home and hospital instruction for Ozric, but home and hospital, hospital is a more restrictive and more expensive method of providing faith for CBUSD, making distance learning the more reasonable option on multiple levels. Forcing Ozric back to school at a time when general education students are not being forced to return is arguably a case of discrimination. Ozzy's mother made that choice before all the facts were available to her or to the district. I don't understand why making this accommodation is so difficult when it's so obvious the right thing to do. Please allow, please vote to allow Ozric to move to distance learning. Bert Higgins. There are no further email comments on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Pat. And thank you to those community members who took time to send in correspondence this evening. So now we'll move on to item 1F, changes of releases. Pat, do we have any changes of releases tonight?
There are none.
Now we'll move on to action items. We'll start with item 2A1. A resolution 2020 slash 2021 dash 24, release of temporary certificate employees. Recommend the Board of Education adopt resolution 2020, 2021 dash 24, release of temporary certificate employees and authorize superintendent or his designated notice of release to employees affected with an effective date of June 30th, 2021. Are there any email comments, Pat?
There are none.
May I have a motion? Now I have a second. Second. Comments, questions or discussion from the board? Mr. Rich.
Just a, just a brief comment on this. Having lived this myself personally before coming to Chino, the temporary district, you're essentially a day-to-day employee. When the contract is issued to that person, you're usually replacing someone on leave along that, along that line and you know that at the end of the year or whatever date given, that's the end of the contract. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that that's what this is, not what some people might think of as the March 15th date of notification. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's correct. It is that, the day-to-day release and we do this every year.
Very good. Any other comments or questions from the board? See, none. We'll vote, Mr. Rich. Hi. Mr. Cruz? No. Mrs. Donnie?
Aye.
Mr. Naugh?
Nay.
I'm a yes, preferential is not with us. Motion passes 3 to 2. Moving on now to item 2A2, public notice and hearing regarding the district's initial bargaining proposal to the California School Employees Association and its Chino Chapter 102 for a reopen or collective bargaining agreement effective July 1, 2021. Recommend the Board of Education give public notice, conduct a public hearing regarding district's initial bargaining proposal to the California School Employees Association and its Chino Chapter 102 for reopening collective bargaining agreement effective July 1, 2021. Now we give notice to open the public hearing at 6:19. Do we have any comments, email comments from the public, Pat?
None.
Thank you. Hearing none. I now close the public hearing at 6:19. We'll move on now to consent items. We are on consent items. Pat, did you receive any email comments, preference consent items?
None on consent.
Thank you. Or remember, should I have polls? Mr. Rich?
Yes, I have one poll, 3D5, page 48.
Okay, Mr. Rich, playing item 3D5, page 48. Are there any others? Any other polls, Mr. Rich?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
No poll.
Mrs. Donnie?
No polls.
Mr. Naugh?
I have no polls.
And I have no polls. We are manner the consent items. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion by Mr. Naugh, the second by Ms. Donnie, a roll call vote on the remainder of the consent items. Mr. Rich?
Aye.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Donnie?
Aye.
Mr. Naugh?
Aye.
I'm a yes, preferential. Motion passes 5 to 0. We're now going to item 3D5, page 48. For item 3D5. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Naugh, the second by Ms. Donnie. Mr. Rich, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly mention to the community that this item is the approval of half our members to the Measure G bond Citizens Oversight Committee, of which I was a part of before being elected to this, to this board. And I'm pleased to see that we were able to get a couple of new candidates and have a full group for the, for the next meeting. So I'd like to congratulate Adrian Price and Michael Leaming for their for the recommendations we voted on this tonight. So thank you, Mr. Sutura, for getting this done. Appreciate it because it's very important. Committee is watching the, we can start with Chino High going up and all the remodel and section. So thank you.
Thank you, Rich. And yes, congratulations to our new appointees after tonight's vote and thank you for your willingness to serve on this committee. Mr. Rich?
Aye.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Donnie?
Aye.
Mr. Naugh?
Aye.
I'm a yes, preferential here. Motion passes 5 to 0. Now it takes us to information items. Do we have any comments or questions on information items from the board? See, none. We'll move on. Now to item 5, discussion item. We're now at the discussion item that I asked our parents to place on this agenda. The purpose is to allow the board to discuss the guidelines for opening in-person instruction for TK to 6th grade students. We're not taking any actions tonight. This is purely for discussion and possible future action. Pat, do we have any email comments from the public?
We received 24 email comments.
24. I will remind everyone that we will listen up to 30 minutes of comments and at the end of 30 minutes, the board can decide whether they'd like to hear the remainder of the comments after the meeting tonight. Pat, go ahead and start it when you're ready, please.
The first email comment received is from Kevin Boucher. Please vote now to open all grades TK through 12th grade. Number one, San Bernardino County met criteria 25 per 100,000 as of Monday, February 15th and tomorrow will be five days total. Number two, CDC school guidelines are backed by scientists and doctors and are real, and are realistic numbers to open junior high and high school now. Number three, all local private and one of two charter schools open safely for months. Four, schools are safe for teachers and students per CDC, who, Dr. Fauci, pediatricians, doctors and scientists. Five, many CBUSD teachers and staff received COVID vaccine already and others very soon. Six, all of Orange County public and private schools have been open for in-person for months. Seven, those with high risk will still have distance learning option. 200-plus letters have been received by CBUSD School Board in support of CBUSD schools opening safely now. Per CDC, two main points. One, K through 12 schools should be the last settings to close after all other mitigation measures in the community have been employed and the first to reopen when they can do safely. Schools should be prioritized for reopening and remaining open for in-person instruction over non-essential businesses and activities. Two, CDC guidelines have more realistic numbers for junior high and high high school that you should really address with San Bernardino Health Department. 49 per 100,000 is a realistic number. California State guideline, not law, recommendation of seven per 100,000 is unrealistic. San Bernardino has not had that low of numbers since beginning of pandemic with limited testing in March 2020. So we are never going to reach that number since COVID is here to stay like the flu. Please vote to open all grade levels TK through 12. It's time to take a stand and do what is right for kids' mental health and just worry about potential money and not just worry about potential monies lost. Realistically, who is going to pull funds from a school doing the right thing with parents? Health Office and unions support, especially when Newsom's recall is reality with enough signatures already. Scott Rosen. CBUSD Board, I write this letter today as a teacher, parent and member of the Chino community. I have mixed emotions about the leadership we have seen regarding the reopening of schools. But none of these emotions are positive. I feel embarrassed, confused and angry. To begin with, I am embarrassed. The people who make the decisions for this district and represent the children community have completely turned their backs on science. I feel like the admin and the people who represent teachers are the same as climate change deniers. They latch on, excuse me. They latch on to the few people who agree with their narrative and agenda, even though 97% of scientists disagree. The CDC, NIH, Dr. Fauci, American Academy of Pediatrics, nearly every university all agree we need to return to school now. Yet the district and people who represent the teachers have not made going back to school our priority. To the point that even if we try to go back to school, our refusal to apply for a waiver in the fall has made returning to school much harder. To think that people who call themselves educators could blatantly disregard facts and data is just embarrassing. Next, I'm confused. Does our district not have distance learning as an option for everyone? When people say that some children and families are not comfortable returning to school, do they not have the option to stay home regardless? And I am confused. Didn't our district spend hu- hundreds of thousands of dollars on Plexiglas, air purifiers, et cetera, so we could return to school safely? Next, I am angry. The most vulnerable children, poor, EL homeless, et cetera, and their best interests are never discussed by the administration of CBUSD or the people who represent teachers. This discussion is always about adults. I am angry because the desire of parents and the community are being blatantly ignored. Teachers who signed up for blended learning want to get back to in-person instruction and parents want their kids to get back to in-person learning. But now I am hopeful, hopeful that the emails and letters will not fall on deaf ears. And those that have been elected will take the time to consider what is truly best for our children and families of CBUSD. From Tina Gackstetter. Dear members of the board, I am writing to you first off to thank you for voting to allow special education to return to in-person instruction at the end of last November. My daughter, who has various disabilities, including a congenital heart condition, epilepsy and profound developmental delays, was struggling daily with distance learning. Within days of her returning to in-person instruction, she was calmer, happier and showing signs of growth almost immediately. It just goes to show you that students truly need to be back in the classroom. Her teachers were all ama- were all amazing during distance learning, but they're even more so in person. I am in full support of parents having the opportunity to choose if they want to remain a distance learning model or return to campus, but it saddens me that so many families are not being given this choice. Please consider reopening schools for those in general education. M.R. I'm in full support of opening all CBUSD schools. Jennifer Ladaga. Good afternoon, Superintendent, President Schaefer and Board members. I am writing to share my support for opening all schools as soon as possible. The CDC says that schools should be the last setting to close after all other mitigation measures in the community have been employed and the first to reopen when they can do so safely. Schools should be prioritized for reopening and remaining open for in-person instruction over non-essential businesses and activity. I understand that our governor is responsible for the tier system you are bound to follow, but this board and this superintendent have not acted in the best interest of students throughout this pandemic. You refuse to apply for a waiver out of fear and ignorance that could have children back in school already. Parents are asking you to turn your back on the fear, follow the science and step out in defense of our children. We want our high schools to be ready to open the day we hit threshold. We want all high school sports to be allowed to train now and play the same way the California universities and colleges are allowed to play their sports. We want and need action. Regarding the class of twenty twenty-one, these students have felt for seven months that they are forgotten by the district and their school administrators. Recently frustrated and angry parents started writing letters and calling out the deafening silence from Ayala's administration. With sixty-two days left of school, it is time for this board to direct the superintendent to give the principals clear direction and authorization to allow the class of twenty twenty-one to have a full outdoor prom in the quad of each school and a normal in-person graduation outside on the school's football field. Social distancing guidelines can be easily implemented along with all CDC recommended precautions. Split the graduation into two or three days if necessary, but please give these students who have waited twelve years for these experience something tangible and somewhat normal. The seniors need something to look forward to and this board of education has the power to direct the superintendent to authorize these two events immediately because they are both outside. Our students do not want drive-by events when they are free to gather at Target, the shops and numerous other non-essential applications safely with masks and other precautions. A drive-through graduation was acceptable a year ago when we didn't know everything about the virus and what was safe. But with high school students in forty-nine states playing team sports and elementary students being cleared to go back to classrooms in California, I think we can all agree that the class of twenty twenty-one can and should have a real graduation to honor their achievement and a real senior prompt to enjoy. After everything these students have endured this year and every they have stolen from them, they need you to stand up for them and make these two events happen. Our depressed, frustrated, unmotivated, doing school from doing school from bed seniors are counting on you, our elected representatives to speak for them. Give them something to look forward to. We are begging you. Stand up for our kids. Stand up for the class of twenty twenty-one. Kristi Salazar. I implore the board to challenge the county and state to reopen our schools, not only for the lower grades, but for junior high and high school schoolers as well. Older children are also missing important milestones with distance learning. I believe the constituents of CBUSD was clear on their wishes to have an option for in-person learning. Although the board has the final say, especially in regard to requesting a waiver in the early part of the school year, the members are elected to be the voice of the people. Thank you, Christina Salazar. Bobby Worthing. Please vote to open all grade levels TK through twelve. It's time to take a stand and do what is right for our kids' education, mental health and future. San Bernardino has met the criteria twenty-five per hundred thousand as of Monday, February fifteenth, and tomorrow will be five days total. Per CDC, K through twelve schools should be the last setting to close after other mitigation measures in the community have been employed and the first to reopen when they can do so safely. Schools should be prioritized for reopening and remain open for in-person instruction and over non-essential businesses and activities. Other school districts, counties and states are recognizing the negative impact that distance learning is having on our children. It's time for CBUSD to do the same. CDC school guidelines are backed by scientists and doctors and are realistic numbers to open TK as well as our junior high and high schools. CDC guidelines have more realistic numbers for junior high and high school that you should really address with San Bernardino Health Department. Forty-nine per hundred K is a realistic number. California State guideline, not law with a recommendation of seven per hundred thousand is unrealistic. San Bernardino has not had that low of number since the beginning of the pandemic with limited testing in March twenty twenty. Our children are needlessly suffering with unreasonable guidelines. All of our local private and one of two of the charter schools have been safely open for months. And we look to our neighbors in Orange County and see their public and private schools that have been open for in-person instruction for months. It is time for our kids to be back in school. Thank you, Bobby Worthing. Irene Udu, dear board members, please consider the following in regards to agenda five A one, in-person school reopening for grades TK through sixth. One, we cannot turn back the clock. Everyone should stop focusing on what decisions should have or should not have occurred during the past year. Two, today the board needs to firmly begin the process to return students to campus. Three, start with TK through sixth sixth grade, then junior high and high school can follow afterwards, per state guidelines. Four, COVID is here to stay, much like the flu. Five, we must adapt, move forward and allow our children and ourselves to live and thrive in this world. Six, you can do this. Seven, we will be okay. Eight, God bless you. Your time and effort is appreciated. Thank you. Humberto Lopez, dear board members, it has become painfully clear that remote teaching is extremely deleterious to our mental and physical health of our kids and also to their education advancement. My two grandchildren clearly miss the physical interaction with their schoolmates and teachers. Their grades have become to deteriorate and their level of stress is feeling of being caged. As we are not pedagogues at home, our ability to alter this ever increase in deterioration is very limited. Thus, we are asking that school be opened full-time, five days a week ASAP this current term. I understand that safety protocols will have to be implemented to be in compliance, but I am sure that this can be achieved safely and efficiently. I have weighed the risks versus the benefits of opening the school full-time for all involved, children, parents and educators. And very clearly the benefits justify the risks. Nothing is a hundred percent safe and nothing involves zero risk. Making decisions based on pure irrational fear is not a good way to live life. People work at the grocery store and handle thousands of customers and remain safe by following adequate safety protocols that do not include vaccination. So why shouldn't school be able to do the same? Let us use science to make decisions and do not let double speak and rhetoric dictate our decisions. Jenny Yee. It's due time to send our children back to school for all grade levels. My boys used to be very active and busy with school and extracurricular activities. Now all they do is sit behind the screen all day. Learning is online, homework is online. Playing is also mainly online. This is not healthy for any individual, moreover, our children. These children will no longer know how to socialize in person. Why are private schools able to safely open? Why are schools in other districts and states able to safely open? Why are clerks at Costco's, for instance, able to work at the checkout stand and serve hundreds of different people a day? But yet a teacher can't stand in front of a class behind a Plexiglas to teach. It doesn't make sense. The school district sent out a survey last summer about returning to school. Vast majority of parents chose their children to be back to school. Why did the school district even ask for our opinion if our voice didn't even matter? Why couldn't those who want to be back be able to and those who don't still do distance learning? The school district had almost a year to prepare. There is no excuse. Also kindly explained the purpose of sending out emails notifying us that an employee or student tested positive at different schools without giving us an update on their condition. Is it for transparency purpose? In that case, the district should also provide us with the recovery status without giving names, just like the letter notifying us that they had COVID instead of leaving out half of the story. Please bring all kids back to school now and open up marching band this summer. Children are hurting emotionally and academically. Alina Ashurov. To whom it may concern, please open our schools ASAP. Kids need to be back in the classrooms. Of course, ideally, I would say five days, a week, full days, but even every other day or once a week or two hours a day. Anything is better than this. I have two kids in Wickman Elementary, a fourth grader and a sixth grader and a fourth grader. They're usually pretty good students, but they have really been struggling with the virtual format. My fourth grader went from getting three S and four S to getting one S and two S. They really cannot learn like this. I know the teachers are trying their best, but it just isn't working. As for my sixth grade teacher says, she feels like he and his classmates are prepared for junior high, but I have a lot of doubts about that. How can they truly be prepared after a year like this? I really feel like all students will have a huge gap in their education from this situation. And the sooner they go back, the smaller this gap will be. We cannot afford to wait another school year again. We cannot ever let schools shut down like this again, at least not for this long. Education and real-life schools should be the last to shut down and first to open back up. If it ever does shut down again. Thank you. Michelle Escobar. I am writing with regards to the reopening of schools in March. First of all, I do understand that we are still in the pandemic, but we now have more of an understanding than last spring when schools had to immediately shut down to flatten the curve for fourteen days. Little did we know that we were going on a one year, we were going on a one year to flatten the curve. With everything that we've learned in almost a year, that children, kids are not spread as the coronavirus. Therefore, why are we sacrificing their education and their mental health by keeping the school shut down? I, for one, can share the pain that I've seen both my daughters go through day in and day out, sitting there in front of their screen, getting a poor education. Most teachers are leaving ridiculous amounts of classwork and not even taking into consideration that these teens have been sitting in front of the screen all day and on top of that, they have to sit in front of the in front of the screen all night to get homework done. I am also a teacher for a different district. My heart is torn seeing my first grader struggling to learn to read and falling behind every day. I believe now that most teachers are getting their vaccine and that we we know more about COVID than we can safely get back to school, at least hybrid style, if not in full person. I ask that you take into consideration my request as well as other parents that feel the same way as I do. We just cannot keep going like this, giving our children a poor education. Our kids are struggling. The kids need to have connection. The kids need a better education than what we're offering through distance learning. And I haven't even mentioned the sad truth of suicides among teens and children. This is the real reality that our kids are facing. It's not COVID, but suicide. I ask with all my heart, please reconsider opening up schools for K through twelve. We have to take a stand and help our kids, not give up on our students. They are the future. Thank you for your time. Please just give me one second. Kim Kristen, to the Chino Valley, to the Chino Valley School Board, first I'd like to start by thanking you for taking the time to read my email and express my utmost appreciation for the parents and teachers who are fighting for our kids. I'm a concerned mother of a third grader who attends Alicia Cortez Elementary. I also have a kindergarten who attends a local private school. My son loves his school, loves his school and his friends, and he's had many tears in the last year. We've been, we've had the different discussions of switching him to private school. The thing is, my daughter has been attending full-time, five days a week since September. They take her temperature every day before she enters on campus. She wears a mask and plays outside in cohorts for recess. She washes her hands frequently and eats at her desk instead of a cafeteria. She has been doing this for the last six months. Her school has never had to shut down and guess what? She has not gotten sick and neither have her classmates. Do you know what that tells me? That my son, along with hundreds and thousands of other children, could have been doing the same thing had the board and the superintendent put our children first. The last time I checked, the virus doesn't discriminate against private and public schools. Additionally, I'd like to express some frustrations with the CBUSD. CBUSD, never once have I felt that my son's interest was at the heart of your decisions. I was asked to fill out a survey, which I happily complied to choose a learning option for my son. Of course, I chose hybrid. Little did I know that was just smoke and mirrors and another tactic to string us parents and our students along. I desperately checked the San Bernardino COVID website every day in hopes that the numbers would be down, thinking that it would make a difference. But do you know what happened? Superintendent Enfield made the executive decision not to apply for the waiver and once again, I was left dumbfounded. While I witnessed schools in Rancho and Altaloma applying for waivers or putting in place a reopening plan, you did nothing. What is your job and who do you work for? Is it your job to challenge science or the CDC? Is it your job to rob us as parents of the decision to send our kids to school? No one should have the right to take away such an essential part of life, but yet you did and you continue to do so. Meanwhile, there are eight, your old little boys crying on the other side of the computer because they can't open an assignment on their computer. There is no one at home that can help him. This is just one of the heartbreaking incidents I witnessed on my son's distance learning. So I ask you, what are you going to do? Are you going to continue to rob these kids of their educational experience? I respect anyone who feels uncomfortable with the idea of sending their kid to a school for in-person learning. However, there has always been an online option for those individuals. Why is it that there's no option for people who want their kids learning in person at school with their friends and their teachers? Additionally, it is completely appalling to me the issues that the school board has discussed in these meetings the last year, as most of the items have no
I have three minutes, please.
Lori Welsh. Thank you for considering sending our kids back to school. I want to voice my support for doing this as soon as possible. I have supported the closures up to this point. Now that the county numbers are low and we are meeting the state guidelines, we should do as was planned. Perhaps, parents and teachers have had the opportunity to choose a learning modality and the district has had plenty of time to prepare for blended learning. Kids who aren't blended should go back to in-person school. In addition, I am asking the board to help expedite the COVID vaccine to all blended learning teachers who wish to have it. At this time, I don't feel the need to tell you the benefits of kids going back to school. This can be subjective and therefore has been addressed in that parents have chosen to do either online or blended. I also do not need to quote any statistics of scientific findings on the pandemic. I trust you have all done this on your own. I believe that everything was reviewed and thought out when the plan for reopening was conceived. All I ask is for you to vote on, to vote to implement the plan. Thank you, Lori Welsh. Kat Luiz. Dear Superintendent Enfield and members of the Chino Valley Unified School District Board. As members of the twenty twenty-one senior class and concerned students, we are writing to you regarding your lack of commitment and willingness to provide twenty twenty-one seniors with interactive and memorable opportunities as this year near ends. Undoubtedly, the coronavirus pandemic has set in motion unprecedented challenges, many of which had students from in-class learning. While these challenges have altered our academic year, they have also dismantled any hopes of normal social interaction with our friends, our peers and our school culture. The results of these actions are devastating. Though the pandemic has kept us from in-person education since March, it seems now that an obvious barrier keeping us from returning to school is our very own CBUSD board. It seems that our school board has ignored the pleas of students and parents of this district to take the necessary steps in getting us back to school. Despite the wishes of the people that elected you and paid to represent, you have failed to submit a waiver which would allow us to get back to on-campus learning. How can we trust you to fairly represent us and our fellow students? If your obligations are first of the teachers' union, who definitely do not have their students at best interest at their forefront. This district nor our very own principal has given us any clear hope or information to hold on to. As you must know, it is the advice of CDC and our president that students go back to school now. While you use every excuse you can to run out the clock, our very own students must battle depression, anxiety and other mental health issues you so readily overlook. If you were truly here for us, you would listen to our pleas and do anything in your power to direct us back to school. Please stop using COVID as a cover to continue this indefinitely. It is too important. We, the class of twenty twenty-one, do not need your pity. We need your action. Please listen. Annabella Ruiz and Schweta Vermont. Karen Mullins. Shritah Ravanchanda and Reddy Kurri. Nicole Aguayo, good afternoon. Please consider reopening elementary schools as well as junior highs. Our kids' mental health is at stake. I am a mother of four CBUSD students and every day that passes of distance learning, I can see my kids regressing and becoming more mentally unstable and socially awkward. As a mother, it hurts to see my kids and many other kids this way. It has been proven that schools are not super spreaders and so please reopen the schools. Thank you. Deanna P. Good morning, fellow board members. We really need to emergency open our schools. Elementary schools are close in meeting the requirements to open, but high school requirements of seven per hundred thousand is simply not realistic. I ask to please look inside your hearts and think about the children who need to get back with their peers and their teachers in person. Please let the kids back in our emergency bases for at least two days for now. Much of Orange County Elementary as well as high school is open for in-person learning as well as private school with no reported catastrophic incidents as a result. Please be our heroes and emergency open our schools as they did in Nevada. Do we really want to lose any of our kids? Corona Norco has already seen an uptick in suicide rates from the pandemic. I can tell you if our schools, including junior and high schools, don't open soon or by the end of the school year, there will be an implosion whereby hundreds or even thousands of kids will very likely move out of the air. there will be an implosion whereby hundreds or even thousands of kids will very likely move out of the area, the state, or go with private school option. I love our city and our people, but we simply cannot continue to go on like this. We will be forced to make these decisions by the end of the school year if the junior high or high schools not open. Our high school seniors deserve a need to have a normal in-person graduation. If you have children, school-aged or grown children, I'm 100%, I'm almost 100% certain you would have wanted this for them. You are all very fine people and have the power to make a difference. Let's do this together. Sincerely, a very concerned parent. Deanna P. Michelle C. I am a parent, I am a parent of two elementary school children in the Chino Valley Unified School District. I know that I speak for so many parents when I say we must safely open our schools back up. Now, my kids' mental health is suffering. Their love of school is gone, and they are falling behind their peers in other open school districts across the USA. This is unacceptable. The distance learning is lacking severely. We elected you to do what's best for our children. What's best is letting them get back to school, whether it be full-time or hybrid. Our children matter. Please take these facts into consideration. Number one, San Bernardino County met criteria 25 per 100,000 as of Monday, February 15th. Two, schools safe for all per CDC, who Dr. Fauci pediatricians, doctors, scientists, Newsom Biden. Three, many CBUSD teachers and staff received COVID vaccine. Four, all local private and char- and one charter school opened safely for month. Five, all of O- Orange County open for in-person. Six, still will have the distance learning option for those at risk. We, as parents, should be part of this decision to reopen our schools. Thank you for your time, Michelle C. Crystal Northolden. I am a mother with three children in the CBUSD, and I am pleading with you to please open up our schools. Enough is enough. For these parents and students that want to attend, please give them an option. Those who are not ready can stay at home as they choose. The children are not only suffering emotionally and physically, they are extremely behind academically, especially when you compare us to other states. In clothing, in closing, you have been listening to Govern- Governor Newsom's advice this entire year on keeping our kids locked in their rooms and in front of a screen. Now listen to his advice today and open up our schools. Time to start thinking about the children. Carrie Shaw. Good evening, Dr. Enfield and school board members. I read today Chino Valley's mission statement, and I read such things as one of the goals being addressing the unique needs of students, how a core value is creating an environment where all students can learn, how you set out to create motivated, self-confident students, and that parents are parents are parents in education, partners in education. All of these are not taking place. The unique needs of students are in no way being addressed through a computer screen. No, not at all. No, not all students are learning. Some don't even have a safe environment to learn in. Have we created motivated students? No, we are daily crushing any kind of motivation. Are you partners with the parents? Well, the parents have spoken over and over again for a long time now, and yet schools remain closed. Whatever it takes, I am requesting that you put in a motion tonight for an emergency school reopening for all schools, elementary, junior high, and high school. We simply cannot wait anymore on someone that has already violated our constitutional rights on numerous levels. Our children need us today to protect them and act on their behalf. They deserve today to have their hope restored and to know that they are the priority and nothing else. Please open up schools immediately for the protection and well-being of our children. They have all suffered so much already. Anything less than opening every school up immediately will be nothing more than an incredible disappointment to our families. The countless calls and emails to Newsom are not changing his mind, and we, as the protectors, protectors of our children, need to break away and do the right thing. This takes courage and risk, but it is well worth it for our kids. The bottom line is, we need to put our children at the very top of the priority list, and it needs to be done right away. There is no more time to keep discussing. We need action from this board tonight. Thank you, Carrie Shaw.
That, that's the thirty minute part.
Thank you.
Thank you for reading those into the record. Thank you to everyone for sending in your comments to the board. Okay, we will now, uh, bring this back up to the dials for our in-person discussion of the reopening of grades TK through six. Uh, we'll start with any comments from Dr. Enfield.
All right. Thank you, President Schaper. Uh, board, tonight I'd like to provide you guys with, uh, some information, uh, to share regarding, uh, the opening of schools. First of all, we are in the purple tier, which is the most restrictive tier of all the, of the four tiers. And so in that tier, we can only at this time consider, uh, bringing back transitional kindergarteners through sixth grade. Uh, we cannot consider bringing back seventh through twelfth grade until we reach the red tier. So we can only consider that because we're in the purple tier. Um, the criteria that, um, I want to make sure that we understand the criteria, that in order to be able to bring back our transitional kindergarten through sixth grade, we need to be at, we need to be below twenty-five cases per hundred thousand uh, for five consecutive days. And as of today, we are on day four. And yesterday in my conversation with the county health department, um, they are very confident that we will hit the five-day mark tomorrow. A matter of fact, they shared with me that they see that if we continue to trend in the right direction, uh, that they strongly believe that in March, uh, which is just around the corner here in March, that we probably will be in the red, uh, and hopefully continue to trend down towards the, the orange tier. So looking at the, that's one of the criteria. The second criteria is that we have to have, uh, submitted a reopening plan to the state health department and to our local health department. And we did that a while back, and we've already been approved. Uh, so our reopening plans have already been approved. So we made the, the second criteria. So we are in a position, uh, probably by tomorrow, effectively tomorrow, when we hit the five-day, that we can consider that reopening. And again, we, we will hit that day tomorrow. I want to remind, remind the board, back in October, at the October fifteenth board meeting, I did make a recommendation to the board not to, uh, apply for a waiver. Uh, I did that based on the information that I was seeing in our district that the positive rates from employees um, were going up. And in the conversation again with their county health department, they recommended, uh, that we wouldn't bring them back because we were hitting the height of the pandemic and they felt it was going to get even worse. And, and I can tell you the numbers of positive cases employees went from around, I think it was nines, uh, all the way up to a hundred and six at the peak uh, of employees a month that were being reported coming to work and having, uh, a positive cases of, of COVID. And so, uh, the health department was correct with that. And so at that time, that was my recommendation to the board is, is not to move forward with that. Uh, but today, today's a, a different day, and today, you know, I'm looking at the, the cases. Um, we are dropping down, we're dropping down. From last week, we were at, I think in thirty-two. Uh, this week we're at twenty, uh, twenty point oh-eight, I think it was, if the number is correct. Um, with that, if it keeps trending, uh, we'll be close to single digits hopefully by, by next week. So we see that that number is trending in the right direction, direction that we wanted to go in. And then also along with that, we've been extremely fortunate, not through our, our, a couple of partners in our district, and I'll, and I'll talk about this at the closing comment. Um, but with a couple of partners in our district that have partnered up with us and with our county health department, we were able to start providing vaccinations to our employees. Um, today we were able to vaccinate, I think, uh, by three hundred and twenty-five. Uh, tomorrow we're scheduled to do another three hundred, and then I think on Saturday we have another schedule of another three hundred. So we've been able to offer, offer, uh, a lot of our employees that opportunity to be vaccinated. Uh, we've set up tiers, a tier one, tier two, tier three, and tier four. Uh, we've had a lot of our employees that have not taken the opportunity for the vaccination. One, because they've already been vaccinated, uh, or two, that they don't want the vaccination. And so we're down, I think we're into that third, fourth tier of, of, of our employees. And, and that last tier is really our substitute in my cabinet and myself. We're in that very last, last tier. And so we're getting very close to that. And so, um, with that, when you look at the, the, the safety of all of our employees with the vaccination, look at the numbers that are trending down, I, I would have to recommend to the board at this time that we do want to consider the bringing new kids back. The other part, um, that I do want to share because I heard this in some of the, or in one of the comments, was about the CalAero parents. Uh, our, our CalAero parents in, in track D, uh, that track aligns with our standard track students. So they had that opportunity with all of our other parents to select into the, blended or into the distance learning program. Uh, but CalAero track A, B, and C started the school year, uh, in July, uh, when, when a lot of the, the plans that we're trying to put in place together, and there were some changes going on. And so they never had that opportunity, and we made the decision to, to keep them in that, in, in track A, B, and C. And then if there was that opportunity for us to come back at that point, we would offer that, that opportunity to the parents. So if we're looking at that, our parents in track A, B, and C, will have that opportunity to select the blended in-distance learning um, for the, for their, for their students. And then also, uh, the parents, uh, just as a reminder, the parents that did that, if we were to bring our TK to sixth grade students back, then our parents that selected distance learning, they would stay in distance learning. They, they would not be impacted by this decision, but I think about one-third, roughly about one-third of our, our parents have selected the distance learning. They will remain with their teachers. Um, and then the parents that have selected the, uh, blended learning, they would get to continue with their teacher, but it just comes back into that blended program that we, that we have set to, to go. And then I also want to, uh, have the board also consider that we take a look at, uh, because that we're, we're trending and that the county health department thinks that we're moving very closely to get to that red tier, that of course our parents are going to be saying, well, what about our seventh through twelfth grade? So, um, as the board's con- considering our, our TK, um, bringing something forward for our TK through sixth grade, I would hope that board also brings something forward for our seventh through twelfth grade, so that when we hit the red tier, because I posit that we will, that we can look at, uh, bringing our students back, hopefully for the seventh through, through twelfth grade. Um, and if they have any other questions, if we, board, I'll be here to answer them.
Thank you very much for those comments, Dr. Cruz. Any questions, comments from the board to start the discussion? The lights don't work, so Miss Conner, please.
Here I am, quick to my button, continue the way. Uh, well, good evening. I'd like to thank all community members, um, who submitted public comments and for the series of emails and other communications the board has received over the last week. Um, I think Dr. Enfield appropriately laid out the state of play, so no need to be redundant. Um, I had a conversation with him yesterday, and so I'll just reiterate my request. I would like to bring an action item forward um, for a emergency special board meeting, uh, this coming Tuesday, February twenty-third, um, to include two, uh, components to that resolution. One would be that when the county hits the case rate of twenty-five per hundred thousand, clearly we are on thing four. I anticipate tomorrow with lucky day number five, um, but then we actually, as a board, ratify, uh, reopening for grades TK through six. Um, I'd like to have a discussion amongst the board about what that, what it's like in terms of phasing in students, because we do have students who have not been on campus before, and we have students and teachers and staff who need to kind of figure out, uh, you know, going back, what that looks like, uh, from a day-to-day perspective. Uh, also for Dr. Enfield's recommendation, um, we might as well, the same resolution, give Dr. Enfield the authorization that once the county hits the seven per one hundred thousand marker. Again, this is the governor's plan, not a action or plan of CBUSD that our junior high, high schools, uh, similarly are able to open. Um, I think as part of this recommendation, um, you know, I'd like to see, uh, our students be able to start uh, on, on a tentative date. And again, this is a proposal of March third for our TK through six students. Um, I've already highlighted that we may need to phase students in, because again, we do have students who have not been on their campus for a while and/or have never been on their campus. So I want to make sure we're accommodating, uh, everybody as well as our parents transitioning back on campus. So, um, you know, I'd like to see, uh, the special form being upheld, and I'd like to make sure we have a reservation that authorizes Dr. Enfield for what will likely be, um, sort of the immediate opening of our TK through six. Um, and then once we hit that, uh, seven for a hundred thousand threshold, um, in the red tier under Governor Newsom's plan, that you have the authorization to go ahead without further more action to allow our seventh through twelfth graders to return.
Mr. Knott, please.
Okay, Dr. Enfield, um. So, we have many parents wanting, uh, are supposed to be open full-time basis instead of, uh, our time of blended. Uh, is there any way that would be a common thing to meet?
No, based on the guidelines, Mr. Knott, there is a spacing issue that we have to follow. Again, in the purple tier, we're the most restrictive tier. As you get into the lower tiers, many of those restrictions are, 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 are no longer there. Uh, that's why in the, the purple tier and, and the red tier, it's very difficult, uh, to meet that criteria, to be able to get to full-time. Unless the governor makes changes to those tiers and those requirements within, then we would be able to do it. But currently, we cannot, we cannot, uh, meet those requirements.
Okay, um, so maybe then we could also talk about that, um, when you were just meeting. Uh, so where that you would have an authority to open up the campus in a full-time basis, uh, when we're able to do so. And also, uh, those, uh, parents, as soon as still having reservations, uh, we need to have their, uh, options kept of distance learning. Uh, I think that's very important. Um, all the families have experienced this COVID in a different ways. But again, as most of the parents are saying, our students have suffered so much, and it's time to open up the campus. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Mr. Rich?
Yes, uh, thank you, and, uh, thank you, Dr. Enfield, for that, uh, clarification of, of your information. Does, as many of you know, when I came here for this office, my, my goal was to, that students return when it is safe. And, and I'm optimistic by watching the numbers, uh, from the beginning of the month, when they were about fifty per hundred thousand, dropping to where they are now. And the fact that I appreciate that the district's been able to arrange, uh, vaccinations for those, uh, staff that, uh, that want and needed it and weren't able to get it, uh, earlier. Uh, I'm, I'm very confident that that is definitely going to help, and I, I look forward to the meeting on Tuesday. One thing I noticed, and I wanted to bring this up, that it, when I first heard about it, it was very confusing to me, when the CDC came out with its, uh, with its guidelines and in reading, that, uh, when they came out with the color-coded, and it didn't match up with California, I was reading an article in EdSource, which is one of the, uh, articles I read daily, um, out of Northern California, and they follow our education, especially K-12, very closely, and mentioned that, uh, the color codes that CDC have would, uh, cause, uh, a confusion with California's fourth-tier system because it didn't match up. And one thing that they did note, and I, this is what I want to quote from them, that the biggest difference is that California's standards for opening schools levels have the force of law. While the CDC's guidance are merely intended as a guide for states and local districts. So while the CDC recommendations might be fine for other states, we have to go by what, uh, California is saying, and that's what the superintendent indicated, uh, a little while ago. So with, with that, uh, I'll, I won't reiterate any of the other comments that, uh, that I've made. I look forward to Tuesday's more, uh, Tuesday's meeting, excuse me, and, uh, we'll go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz, do you have questions or comments?
Yes, I'm very happy that finally we did this. And as Dr. Enfield, you know, I have respect for you and CSA and, um, and the teacher group, especially you guys collaborating, and you can chart the right dates, which, that's out of respect for, for, for organizations and schools. But you know, it's very important to be proactive, and this is good to be proactive. You know, I was reading the criteria of the reopening of in-person instruction. And this one states, if the school in the phase in model has opened for in-person instruction and the county changes to the purple tier or greater than twenty-five, the school may continue the phase in reopening. And let me tell you, that is so important, because we know that this is not going to go away, and this probably will increase in terms of the effect rate as the future. So at least we know, there are kids who are in school, and I'm going back and forth. There are certain conditions, I must admit, that they did talk about, but you know, these, these conditions, you know, they're, they're sort of, uh, you need someone that really knows what you're talking about. And I believe there's somebody here, somebody with the team, that do understand this, where it mentions the school closing determinations. So hopefully, you guys can bring that up and discuss that within the community, what would be detailed for the closure of the schools. But I do know one thing, there was three votes, but one voted to, but one of three stated that LHO, I think that's the Department of Health, may also determine school closure. But what they told me May also determine school closure, but what they told me, it would be the like that they would. So uh maybe someday in the future, you guys would, would look at page thirty-seven and look at bullet one and bullet two. And, and discuss it within the community to understand what goes to me. You know, for instance, they turn about twenty-five percent operates, it's the operates of the school site. So that'll be important, but I'm only glad it's proactive, kids have to come back and uh it's great. So, good job.
Dr. Enfield, please.
Yeah, Mr. Cruz, I'm going to address that. We've already looked at that criteria and if it's on our dashboard. We've updated the, the dashboard to, to, to account for, for that criteria. Um under the old criteria, it would have been a, a little bit easier to close a school based on the case rate. But they are correct, the county health department uh would be very difficult to close on the new criteria that they put forward. But we have a dashboard to report that, all that, that data as, as it comes in.
Mrs. Gagne?
Uh Dr. Enfield, I'd also like to make a request. Um you know, we've had a lot of communication clearly on reopening. Uh thankfully, we're finally uh you know, at that threshold and able to do so. Hopefully this board will take action uh this coming Tuesday to do so. Um I think the other piece of this is just communication. Um one of the things that I have noticed uh may be more heightened because during the pandemic, people are more communicative. Uh via social media, email, other means. Um there is a lot of misinformation going on out there. Uh example is, you know, I had high school and junior high students emailing me very upset that we were not going to have any in-person learning next academic year. Um and you know, I actually spoke to one of their parents and realized that that's been going around the community. Um which is really unfortunate, that's very upsetting and not true. Uh we made zero decisions. Um that's just one example that I just felt uh was heartbreaking that we had students that were being told things that were clearly not true. But I think what this comes back to is, and I, I look to this as an opportunity. Um I'd like to see more active communication with the community. Um I think we ought to send out a communication about what we're potentially doing this coming Tuesday. Um and then once we make a decision, however that turns out this coming Tuesday. Um I do think we need to send out uh more frequent communication about what is going on. Um you know, I'm going to anticipate that even though distance learning parents most assuredly are staying in distance learning. Um you know, I, I still think that's going to come up as a concern and probably variety of other things such as what have we done on our campuses to prepare. Um I just think it might be helpful to maybe heighten the level of the frequency of communications. Um you know, as we move into this, this new phase.
Um yeah, there's gonna be, we have letters that will be going out tomorrow in uh participation of our conversation yesterday. And uh since we have uh special letters for the Cal Aro parents to kind of walk into some of the process. And so letters will probably go out, will, will go out tomorrow and letters will be going out Tuesday. Um after the board, uh board uh studies yet, or I'm sorry, special board meeting on Tuesday. Again, yeah, we're in a position to where there needs to be a lot of communication of what's going to be going on and to remind parents. Uh about what programs they're in, what does that program look like, to remind them what the blended program uh is and the schedules. So we'll, we'll continue with that.
Was there comments? The lights don't work, sir. Go, go ahead, have a comment.
They don't work. Frank, you know, we know what's so disturbing when we've younged our children to the past, they're going to have. About their experiences like everybody in this generation that we have experienced. That was an atrocity, what we've done for our children. You know, that everything else comes and goes because things are truthful. Things are, don't, they don't tell us what's actually happening, what is occurring. Things get censored, people can't talk about the truth, and then people just don't know what's going on. But let me tell you, our children, they have suffered tremendously. And that is something that we have to hopefully think about, our reflection, what we have done in the coming decades. And that is something that maybe we have to forgive ourselves for what we've done. Thank you.
Mr. Knott?
Yes, uh I have been hearing uh many concerns from our parents. Uh about uh their future, uh specifically their academics. Uh being an ear on online of their own and so there's many concerns and, and. And to preserve and is, and still we have to progress. As one of the best school districts in uh county, uh we need to uh, I think now is the time to really plan. Uh to assist those students that who could, who, who has been fall behind. Um because of these pandemics. And whether it's, it's recruiting uh colleagues, volunteers, college students or, or, or something or technology. Uh I think this is a time that uh we need to be, be well-prepared for. And I know our staffs are well-informed and, and they're very knowledgeable. Uh but I'd just like to uh remind that uh this is what our parents are concerned, sorry. Thank you, Dr. Enfield.
Okay, uh just a few comments to add. And I, I agree with Mrs. Gagne in the action item. And I, I would like to see us talk about putting some specific dates for return on those. Um I personally would like to see our TK through second graders return on Wednesday the third. Uh that'll give those families a week to uh prepare, to make adjustments to work schedules, childcare issues and so forth. Um and then it'll also give our sites an opportunity to um. Spend a little more time with our kindergarteners who have not been on campus yet and need to kind of get a feel for what their um routine and schedule is going to be. Um also our first graders probably haven't spent a lot of time on the upper grade side of campuses and the kidder side. So I think it's important that they have an opportunity to, to adjust a little bit. Um and site graders, I, I would like to see them on there uh to potentially show our kindergarteners, first graders, uh what might be expected. I think it might be important out of the role model there. And then I'd like to see the rest of our grades third through six return on Monday the eighth. Um so I, is there any discussions, comments or disagreements or anybody have any other dates they'd rather see than those for returns? Back to you.
The, the, the only concern I would have would be October third date. It would be uh notifications to parents, but if the board is, is, is comfortable with that, we can make any comment.
Nope. Mr. Cruz said don't work, but please make a comment.
All this time you've been listening to Dr. Enfield. Now you're taking, you're, you're taking the decision to make this, this, this decent. Life is just better off to protect our people to chart the dates because he's working with people. So it just makes perfect sense. When it comes to dates, we're going to open up a lot of Dr. Enfield, which you've given all this time to finish this up.
Mr. Knott, do you have something?
Well, I, I sure, yeah, I, I'd like to see uh Dr. Enfield. Uh speaking with our, our site administrations and collaborate and, and what would be the best date uh for returning for the dates. I think that's very uh crucial because when schools are open, uh we want to be well-prepared. And, and the childrens are all safe and education's would happen in a, a very nice way. Uh in order to do that, I think uh we need to have a communication with our site principals and our staffs. I think uh that would be the right way to uh conduct.
Mr. Rich? Yes, uh thank you. Whatever date we decide on, I, I'm hoping that we will work uh with ACT and the, and the teachers about getting their classrooms ready. I know some are doing uh teaching virtually from their classroom, but not all of them are. And even if they are, their, their rooms are likely not ready as far as moving in all the, the safety equipment or however things organized. Or however they're going to organize the classroom period as they usually do at the beginning of the school year. Uh we're going to need to make sure that we work with ACT and, and allow for those, uh those work days to get very, the children.
Thank you, Sanya.
Uh yes, uh this is a question for Dr. Enfield. If we were to take President Schaefer's recommendation of starting our TK through two students on March third. Uh following on by our third through sixth grade students the following Monday, March eighth. Put that in the resolution that we would vote for as well as the high school and junior high component. Because I do think we just ought to knock this out in one resolution and maybe be a form to open those grades when we can. Um is there anything stopping us from, if you are to learn something in the next few days, um amending those dates? If they don't work for any of the parties referenced in this conversation?
No, uh and, and, and that's what, based on uh Mr. Schaefer's recommendation, that's what I would put it, I would put that into the resolution. And then it can always be modified at uh on Tuesday. And then again, we'll, we'll take a look at that. The, the little caveat I have is, is we have Cal Aro. When we look at their, their schedule because they're, 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 they have tracks A, B, and C. And when you look at those three tracks, they have A, B, C, and D, and then there are ones, I don't remember exactly, but we were looking at that. One's coming off, one's starting. And so those dates may not really, there may be better dates for Cal Aro that when it makes most sense to transition some of those tracks. So again, that's going to be the little caveat again there, but uh again, working with staff uh too. I don't think we want to go any later than that um past the, the eighth, that the third is, is, is the date that, that, that will make it tough. But, but I will have that on the resolution.
And then Dr. Enfield, do you uh for workability for staff, is one resolution, one action item, or two action items? Separate the high school and the secondary students out or?
Yeah, Pat and I will, will look at that. It'll be one resolution. It's not how we used to do in A, B, or C. That's what we'll do, B, and then the, and then the A, and then the B and so forth. So you know, we'll set that.
Okay. Are there, Mr. Knott?
Yeah, is there also a possibility that we could add to it? If we're able, that we could return us just full-time basis?
Uh well, they're not going to be concerned. If we, if we have them back, Mr. Knott, the goal is to get them here full-time. I, 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 once they're back and we have that opportunity to get all our kids here five days a week, we're, we're, we're moving in that direction.
Let's keep that in the reservation.
So that's a criteria. If we were, if the kids are back and we're in orange, we're automatically, yeah.
We can keep a warning.
Yes, yes.
Because uh a lot of stuff, parents of full-time basis are very informed for their concern. And then, in the meantime, uh you could uh talk to our principal. And the school there uh with their staffs and see what is a feasible date for them that's the best. For the student state as well as all their campuses and bring that uh information to us on Tuesday. So that you could make an informed decision.
Any other comments? Questions for Dr. Enfield? Okay, um Dr. Enfield, do you need any other clarification from us? Uh moving forward. No, that's, that's, that's not clear. Okay, listening to the board, again, this is just a special moment, we will take no action. But I will go ahead and per our board by my ninety-three twenty, call a special board meeting on Tuesday, February twenty-third at four P M. Dr. Enfield, we're sure that the public is properly noticed. Okay, moving on now. Uh board member, I do believe we had two or three uh comments from the community that were not read during our thirty-minute period. I'll ask now for um the consensus if the board wants to hear the remainder of those items or if you think um. The subject matter has been thoroughly uh discussed. Or just for the I have said this. So three minutes. Okay, we'll go, Mr. Cruz, consensus. Okay. Okay. All right, we had consensus. Uh Pat, if you could go ahead and read those three comments down before our board uh comments, please.
Okay. From Mornell Allen. I'm a mother of three in the district, a fifth, eighth, and twelfth grader. I have heard that you're looking to reopen the schools and I personally do not think it would be a good idea to open schools with so little time remaining in the school year. None of my kids want to go back, even my senior does not want to return, nor do any of her senior friends. It has taken us a long time to build a schedule that works and it would take a lot of maneuvering to up, uproot that for only a few months' time. It would be best to finish off the school year and return in August and hope we have actually beat this thing once and for all. So we, so when we do return, our kids are not pulled out of school yet again and forced to deal with the emotional repercussions. Our children were put on this learning at-home program with substantially less cases than there are now. If it was okay to do then, to do that then, why is it okay to, to do it now with a lot more active cases? If too many cases are seen in my child's class or school, then my children will be forced to then go back to learning at home for a time. And the yo-yo of it all is cruel to the students. Unless you can commit to fully being back without pulling the kids out again within the rest of the school year. I'm asking that you just keep the kids on their current schedules for the remainder of the school year. This has been, this has been a hard enough as it is. Thank you, Mrs. Allen. Gina Crawford, to the board, please open our schools now. No more excuses. Kids are not the key group transitioning, transmitting COVID. Other states have opened schools successfully with little to no transmission. Our kids have suffered long enough and need to be in the classroom. Sadly, I see that it could take another two to six weeks for schools to be ready. What have you been doing this whole time? Shouldn't everything already be in place? This is so tragic. I am disappointed in the system. Sincerely, Gina Crawford. Christie Mayor, hello, I have four chi- four children, grades seven, five, five, and two. Distance learning has been extremely difficult for us. The closure of sports, entertainment, and businesses has been extremely hard. But the closure of schools has been, after Veterans Day, I pulled two of my four kids out to homeschool. One had headaches every morning from screen time and the other was watching YouTube and playing video games the entire class time. Those two are not doing workbooks only, but it is not easy. It is so difficult for my kids not to have social interaction. It is also diff- difficult for them to be home all day. I remember picking up my kids in, in the car from school and they would get in the car tired and sweaty. They haven't had, they hadn't walked to or from school and they hadn't done two hours of P that day. It was just the way, more exertion to get out the school, to get out the door for school in the morning. Walk to their class, walk to recess, be outside, do P E and walk back and forth to class. Despite our best efforts, our kids are out of shape. All of our step, all, all that, excuse me, all that stuff happens in their chair, except for the pathetic video P E substitute. The lack of exertion is not just physical, it has an emotional and mental component too. These kids are sad and depressed. They are feeling a significant void. They want to be back in school. The teachers want to be back in school. Provide a distance option for many, for any teachers or families who want to stay home and then put our kids back in school full-time. Sincerely and hopefully, Christie Mayor. Christina Pranlook, to Chino Valley School Board, I am writing to request that our schools be allowed to open as soon as possible. As a parent to two children in Chino Valley Schools and a licensed mental health provider. I can tell you firsthand that this school closure has had a serious impact on the mental health of our kids. Children need to be in a schoolroom environment for so many reasons. It is critical to the social, emotional, and academic development. The reliance of school, of virtual schooling to educate our children has only served to increase the anxiety and depression in many of our children. As a practicing mental health provider, I can attest to substantial increase in self-harm and suicidal thoughts in our kids. Our emergency rooms are currently seeing a spiking kids with suicidal ideation of all ages, but it is especially high in our adolescents. The longer this continues, the greater the increase in mental health issues in our children. One of my children has also struggled greatly during the school closure. He was formerly a straight A student at Cannon Hills Junior High and is now earning several apps. He is struggling to learn via, via the virtual forma and has become quite depressed. Because of the isolation and excessive screen time required to keep up with distance learning. It should also be pointed out that children whose parents are concerned about COVID nineteen have the choice to keep their children home and continue distance learning. However, please be aware that the vast majority of K to twelve families in this school district and this state are ready to get their kids back to school. Please consider the detrimental effect that this is having on the mental health of our children and resume in-class learning for all grades as soon as possible. Sincerely, Christina Beckman Pranay. No further email comments.
Thank you, Pat. Well, now move on to our communications, board member communications. Uh Mr. Cruz, please.
Yeah, um Dr. Enfield, for foster orchestra, um like, I would like to go back to the business. Right? You know, the CDC has changed their views that uh student has high risk of capitalism. And uh. And the food constructs, especially the part, you contact, so it's more consistent. So we can more her growing in this. And if, then if all else fails, we would like to place this as a. And if, then if all else fails, we would like to place this as a as much as we could hold on, on struggle to come back to this. There's only one thing I just want to say. That is, the U.S. National Library has clinical trials done there. Vaccine candidates studying to describe the safety, tolerability, efficacy, and efficacy of RNA vaccine candidates against COVID-19 healthy individuals. And it states, it begins April 29, 2020, and it ends January 31st, 2023. So we can say that people taking the vaccine now are very much on this, on the one trial that ends in 2023, January 31st.
Thank you. Mr. Knott, please.
Yes, I'm so glad that we're about to enter into a normal life again. We're talking about education side. And I'm really happy, but there's also a concern among students, teachers, just everyone who's involved. There was a vacancy of over a year of education, in a way, you know, personal relationships. So I think it is very crucial that we be all kind and also flexible to our students, to our parents, and also to our staffs and our teachers and our local site administrators. One lunch lady had shared with me the other day in a junior high school where she was really hurt when she was verbally called on by a parent. And she deserved respect, and which I had agreed. So this, in a thought, respect everybody, but also our main concerns about students. So I think it's imperative that we be kind and be flexible with students after coming back from one-year vacancy. We should take baby steps to assist them and support them so that we could meet their emotional needs and also their educational needs at the same time. Again, I'm happy to see that we're about to open our schools. Thank you.
Mr. Grinch, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick points. First, I'd like to offer congratulations to Dorian Kim, a science teacher at Cannon Hills Junior High for being selected as one of the finalists for the 2021 California League of Schools Region 10 Teacher of the Year. Region 10 area represents the counties of San Bernardino, Riverside, Inio, and Mono. But quite an honor and well representative of our, for our district. So congratulations again to Dorian Kim. Continuing with the science theme, I had the opportunity to virtually join District Science Opportunity Engineer, excuse me, opportunity to virtually join the District Sciences Engineering Fair Awards last evening, where the award winners and their projects were announced. I wanted to offer my congratulations to all of the students recognized for the achievements and extend the best of luck to our trophy winners that are going on to the county competition. Also, thanks to the, our staff for the work they did in organizing and judging the competition. And while we didn't get to see the projects online, just the titles proved, at least to me, to be very interesting and quite involved. So congratulations to everyone there. And last, I would like to thank Senator Connie Leyva for her visit recently to observe some of the special ed cohort classes at Donalugo. And thank you to Dr. Enfield and Principal Arrow for their assistance in arranging the visit. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Mrs. Gagne?
Yes, thank you. I just want to acknowledge, as we embark on taking action potentially this coming Tuesday, that there's been a lot of things happening behind scenes since last March. They're not all these things that are immediately incredibly visible to the public, but you know, this district has been working to prepare. You know, there was even a new segment a couple of months ago identifying things we have done on a certain campus. So a lot has gone to be put in place to make reopening happen. We had to have a plan submitted to the state approved by the state of Waltsa County. So I just want to make it very clear that there were a lot of steps that were taken that were not necessarily taken in formal action on this diet, but were done behind the scenes in preparation for reopening. I've had a lot of requests of sort of what our plan is, we have a plan, and we do. And that's one of the reasons I feel comfortable moving forward. I also want to note that I think we've done a phenomenal job with providing testing, you know, jumping on the vaccines as we've been able to. Clearly, the vaccination rollout in California has not been sparkling, but I will say this district it has. So I do applaud the district for moving very fast on testing, as well as vaccinations. And it's my sincere hope that we are welcoming students back on the campus in the next two weeks. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Enfield.
Yeah, I wanted to personally thank Dr. Lawley. He has always been a supporter and advocate for our district, and I want to thank him with the health service alliance that he worked with for their support in us being able to roll out our vaccination clinic today and tomorrow. If it wasn't for him, we wouldn't have been able to put that on. So again, I want to thank him. I also want to thank Dr. Kim, the president of Chino Plaza Pharmacy, who reached out to us and wanted to support us and help get our kids back. And he's helped provide some vaccinations, additional vaccinations for us to be able to offer that to our employees. And again, if it wasn't for community members like this that would help us, it does make it an easier transition. I want to share a letter that was sent to me today by one of our employees. It said, "I just walked in the door from receiving my vaccination, and I want to thank Dr. Johnson for organizing this event for the Chino Valley even by school district employees. The process was smooth, easy, and so well organized." I know that when something, something, I know when something is disorganized from the outside looking in means that a lot of the people working in the inside work extremely hard to have such a smooth-running process. Nurse Mary Peters administered my vaccine, and I did not even feel a pinch, which is a sign of a very experienced nurse. And I've heard from so many educators that have waited in long lines for hours to receive their vaccinations. I know this was a true blessing to me that it was, I was in and out in twenty minutes. Again, thank you for giving me this opportunity to receive the vaccination in such a comfortable and easy setting. And I share that again because I want to give kudos to Dr. Sherry Johnson and Sherry Ma, one of our school nurses, and all of our school nurses who helped put that on. They did a phenomenal job. I went over there to thank them. I can't thank them enough. It was so well done, so professionally, and it was just, was awesome. And our staff there were very excited that we're receiving the vaccinations. And there were, a number of them said to me, you know, we want our kids back, we want to get back with our kids. So that was, that was, to me, was really exciting news to have. And again, when I read that email, it's the work that our staff across our district does. The work of the vaccination clinic is an indication of the work that our sites will do in the reopening of our schools. And I know it will be a very smooth, we had a very smooth opening when we brought our special ed students back. And when we bring our TK through sixth grade students, I promise it will be a very smooth transition. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Enfield. I have just a couple of things. First, a couple of committee reports I'd like to get on the record. From Ballview ROP, recently, we have, they had submitted and appears to be initially successful in awarding a couple of state grants for CTE, the CTE, which is great. As more information becomes available about the finalization of the amount of grant awarded to BDRP, I will keep the board updated. Also, something from Chino Parks Recreation Commission. Something that they talked about last night at the meeting was the utility box art program that they instituted in the city of Chino Hills. It is a other program at this point. There are four utility boxes that are owned by the city that the city has decided to take pictures from the archives and pictures submitted from the community and turn, put them onto vinyl, a vinyl wrap, and then they're wrapped in utility boxes. So there are four of them throughout the city of Chino Hills right now. And I believe there is six more online, if they hope to have ten done by this year, and then continue moving forward with the boxes that the city owns. So I thought that was fair. I also had the opportunity last night to log in and watch the virtual award ceremony for our CPUSD science fair, which was for our fourth, twelfth graders. I'd like to congratulate, congratulate everyone who participated in the, in the science fair. Applause to those who received ribbons and trophies. Very proud of all of you. And the best wishes to those students who will be moving on and representing CPUSD at the county science fair. We're rooting for you, and we know you'll do much better. I'd like to take the opportunity to echo what Dr. Enfield said and thank our medical partners in the community, as well as our own medical personnel within the district for stepping up and doing a phenomenal job of getting our employees who wish to be vaccinated, vaccinated. I think it's a great level of protection provided to them, and I'm very happy that it's happening at such a quick pace. I'd also like to take a moment to thank my fellow board members for your participation in our discussion tonight. It's a very important topic, and I appreciate everyone's input, and I look forward to moving forward with this. I'd also like to address lastly, something was in a few of the comments this evening as far as our labor groups and them being an impediment to us coming back. That couldn't be farther from the truth. I know the district's been in constant contact, I've been in contact with both the presidents and both of our labor unions. And they want our students back. So to blame them for this is just wrong and it's erroneous because they have not been an impediment to us coming back. You might hear about it in other districts, in other states, in other areas. That is not the case in Chino Valley. So I would like to personally thank our CSCE members and our ACT members for their work and their cooperation in making sure that we can get our students back as soon as possible. Just want to set that straight to the record. They've been nothing but accommodating, and they've helped the district in every way possible. So thank you. But Dr. Enfield, I would like to make one additional comment request. As we transition our students back to campus, hopefully, can we ensure that our nutritional services folks do have enough time to prepare on, especially the campuses where those kitchens may have been shuttered during the crisis, and make sure that, or ensure that we also are not only providing our on-campus meals, but also continue for the grab and go for those on-distance learning and those that might be on and off day for the higher learning.
Yeah, we've already, Ms. Chin and I have already talked about that, so that's how it'd be in the process.
Thank you very much. That's important to continue to provide those students, especially for the grab and go. So with that, concludes my comments. I hope everyone has a great evening. I adjourn this meeting of the Regular Board of Education at 7:43 p.m.